Stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you for your patience tonight. We're just waiting a few minutes left. Mr. From PAG TV Gavin gets situated. Okay. Introduction of those present.
So the signing sheet on the back table is the one on just the lined paper, not to be confused with the other signing sheet that's there. If you sign one or the other, I will figure it out. And we have, I'm Kristin Powers, I'm the Assistant to the Select Board, and we have Bob Jones, my feature, Richulit, Jessica Van Ork, and John Malcolm, members of the board. And the only thing is, just before you speak this evening, if you could just identify who you are, just for the purpose of the minutes. Thank you.
Any addition or deletion?
So for an addition under older unfinished business would be the continued discussion of the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Grant.
Okay.
And a deletion is the continued discussion of the ARCA funds because we were just not quite able to pull that piece together. And then Mr. Wesco had requested an item on the agenda, but it was the same discussion topic as what's already listed under older unfinished business. So I just wanted to put that out to the board to see what, how you wanted to do that.
Is this something independent of that, or should it be all?
What's that?
Is this, is this, do you want to be independent of the rest of the discussion? Or?
I'm not sure if either's.
We have older unfinished business under the gravel pit. So it pertains to that. So we'll keep it all together then?
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's it? Approval of minutes? Anybody see anything with the other minutes?
I'll move that we approve the minute.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Announcements?
Nothing specific. I don't know if this is pertinent. I've noticed that Bob Morleto, our Emergency Management Director, is starting to post some updates again regarding COVID to the Facebook page. So if anybody's interested, those are back, back and informative. So take a look at that.
Do we have a report from the zoning administrator?
Nothing that I saw. He had a report for us last night, but that, yeah, nothing that was sent.
Nothing that was sent. Okay. Jessica, would you like to go over your planning commission report?
Sure. Planning Commission's report. The Planning Commission met last night, August 23rd, and worked on conditional uses and reworked the conditions for Contractor's Yard. We also came to a general agreement that we'd like a broader list of conditions that can apply to all conditional uses that come before the DRB, and that that would probably be more helpful and flexible for them than listing the particular conditions off for every single conditional use. We also discussed this requirement that appears in several of our conditional uses, but not in all, that the owner reside on the premises. And we compared that part of our bylaws to those of other Vermont towns, many of which don't have such a requirement. So we did come to an agreement on that, but we did discuss it. And next time, we're going to be reviewing and reconsidering the permitted and conditional uses in Village and Commercial VC zoning district. We also worked on the Enhanced Energy Plan and discussed several ideas for how to indicate the approved and non-approved spots for larger solar arrays in our town. We are in agreement that the best spots are in the industrial district from about West Pollitt up toward Granville, that whole area. And we also discussed whether we could require screening or setbacks for solar based on information that John Weiss, the Pollitt Fire Chief, had provided in an email. Next meeting, we're going to have a guest from Green Mountain Power who's going to bring us up to speed on the electrical grid in Pollitt. That's my report.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? For the Planning Commission? Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Jessica. And the road foreman's report.
Thank you, Father.
We'll leave that up to you, Rich. John, are you and Jessica have any, anything to add?
No.
Rich has got the tractor project, so we'll.
Yeah, there are a couple of other things, too. I met with Alan from Better Roads, the grant that we've got for that Harrah Brook Road project. He was pleased with the project. I sent him a bunch of pictures. Just need to work on getting the bills together with him. I talked with Keith. He's gonna, he's got a plan with Julie to put that together. So that's, that's all good. I talked with Dale this morning. They have gotten all the Winter Stone hauled and piled in Pollitt. They're heading to West Pollitt now. So that's going well. And the tractor, I think you all got the purchase agreement to, to go over in the email, right? Did you guys get that?
I didn't.
I didn't, no.
Okay, well, that's the, the agreement with, just the terms. The couple of items we wanted fixed and replaced. So I saw that in email to the board, but must have been too late. And there's been a bit of a delay on the catch basins for the projects in West Pollitt. I don't know how long, but I guess a couple of weeks.
So is this the meeting at which we were planning, if we like what we see, to approve the purchase of the tractor?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, I just wanted to get a, this purchase agreement with all the little details that we wanted. So we had it all written up and then we can decide whether we want to go forward with it or not.
Okay, so back and forth to Greenwich. So they'll deliver the tractor with the head that's on it. When the other head comes in, they'll come get the tractor.
And install the head.
And install the head. Okay. For 79033.
And that's with the new head, as well as?
With the new hitting. So we get to keep the flail head for the grass and the rotary cutter head for heavier duty stuff. Okay.
And they had fixed a rim, put a tube in a tire, refilled it. And then there were some sensors that needed to be replaced.
How many hours did you say the tractor had approximately?
Right around 1,500.
1,500, okay.
Did they replace the wind over it? They did. They used like a rubbing compound on it.
Right, because it's Lexan. Okay. So Rich has done some work in the past meetings. He's found that that seems to be as good of a deal as, as we've found. And every time I've looked at anything, it all comes back to relooking at that range and not around here or anything like that and more hours, most of the ones that I've seen in like tractor house or stuff like that or.
And the booms aren't as heavy either, and that's because of two heads.
I feel it's a good, a good price and a good investment for the town to have. I think that the roadside mowing is, is really a huge necessity. And as time goes on, it's the only feasible way that, that most of it can be maintained. So.
Is there room in West Pollitt for garages?
Yeah, there's definitely room, yeah.
There seems to be, like, in the winter, they only put a grader in there. And then there's that whole back piece that they back tobacco in. But I think the tractor could go right up on there. I'm sure there's plenty of room to park it for the winter, for sure.
And we've got plenty of money in the equipment fund for it.
Right.
Well, next thing is to make a motion. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, John made a motion to purchase this tractor from Capital Tractor.
I'll second it.
Bob seconded it. Any more discussion? 7903300.
Do you want to see this, Kristin?
No. I got it. I think I got the vendor and the amount. Is that what you'd like included in the minutes?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, good deal.
When will it?
Yes.
When is that slated to arrive?
We can get it within a week.
Cool. Very exciting.
Somebody will get a hold of Dave Osley and ask him, does anybody have his contact information or?
I don't.
I might. I can check and see.
Somebody needs to come and tell them that we've purchased a tractor and we would.
Is he an exclusive phone call kind of guy, or does he do email?
Well, I'm sure he's a phone call kind of guy, only.
Okay. I'll see what I can, I'll be in touch with you all and see where I can get with that.
If you want to send that to me, I'll call them. If you find his number, or I guess we could probably text Keith and get it, too.
One other thing while we're on, on this topic, is I went and looked at that project on Harrah Brook with Alan. And there's a stone or a slate wall that Keith had built just before he went, went out. And we've got to put some, either concrete blocks or something up. If you go up and look at the road, you'll see to keep the cars out of there. This is a pretty good drop off. So that's one thing we've got to, got to consider.
Is this, is there room enough to put the, put guardrails in ahead of the wall, or?
There probably is. I don't know how well it's going to drive down. I don't know how far it came back with the rock. I mean, the edge is, or the road is right on the edge of the, the wall that he built. There's not a lot of room there.
I'm wondering what would be the best option, you know?
I know for right now, I mean, if we just put something up there before it gets icy.
Right. So we definitely need to at least put some blocks up there. Or one of those, one of those barriers things, huh?
Temporarily.
But there's some of them in West Pollitt, isn't there?
Could be.
I believe there's some in West Pollitt.
If I could talk to Dale about that.
Check with those guys. But I think they, they had some left over from something. And they were lined at the end of our property where the, where the pit starts. And he's moved them out of the way because he's, he's got that access road in there anyway. So but they would be more important that they were moved up there than to.
And those guys may know, you know, maybe Keith had a plan for it. I don't know. But and we can, we can get to the bottom of that. But I noticed that the other day when I was up there, that that's definitely going to be a problem.
So you'll work on, work on that. Any other questions for the road, the road report?
Just the, I'm just giving you the squeaky wheel, but just the signs.
They did get them put together.
Nice.
So they're put together, Terry put those together a week ago, maybe more. But we got to get, just put a couple posts in. We need to know where, where they need to be put out, and we'll do it. So you tell us we want one here and over there or whatever, in a specific location, it'll get done.
Yeah, I was making mention just a little bit to patterns that I observe just in this side of town, because that's where I am. And I do think that heading north might be a benefit in this side, just because this, the speed limit slows pretty consistently. Whereas you're heading north, heading out of town, it does pick back up. So for whatever that's worth, but.
So I don't know how we want to decide that, but.
We kind of.
It decided.
Yeah. But as soon as we make that decision, we'll get put up.
Right. So we kind of.
And I could talk to Dale about it as well, maybe. I mean. And we want one in Pollitt and one in West Pollitt?
And I think that one at sort of the predetermined problem area that was sort of the start of this whole conversation, which I don't know exactly where, where Jennifer's at.
Jennifer lives, if you turn in the monument and head north, she lives in like the third house, right there on the right, going up through there. So.
So somewhere along.
Like very, right in between the monument and the church there.
Heading down the hill?
Well, she, I don't know if she, she says some people are coming from New York State racing up the hill, but I don't know. Because that's not, to me, that sounds more of like a loud vehicle than actual speed. Because by the time you come around the corner, go by the monument, it's kind of hard to get up ahead of speed.
People go the other way faster through there from.
Coming up the hill?
Coming down the hill, down the hill, going through, onto 153.
Come down the hill and shoot out toward Granville?
Yeah. Or, yeah.
Well, it's way more down the hill.
And it can be moved over.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And then.
Do we have owner permission or 100% or right of way or?
Probably depends on how far we are in the right of way. But that property in there probably would be either the church parking lot or it belongs to Monty. So.
Okay, we'll get that figured out. Is that where the other spot, somewhere between Sheldon and?
Yeah, somewhere between Sheldon's and this spin for now. But I don't know. I was trying to look to again in terms of people's property line. I know that, yeah, I'm not sure how they get whatever, how we would, I don't know, do you need to alert somebody that it's going essentially in their front yard?
It'll be in the state right of way on Route 30. It'll be in the town right of way in West Pollitt. So I mean, I think it'll be within the right of way. But we can still talk to the landowner and make sure it doesn't.
Heads up.
Right.
Okay. Suspect's report. Anything from the suspects?
I don't have any. They, we got, most of us were here for the hearing. We have since received a letter from one of the opponents, and, or actually two, two opponents. But we have inspection committees ready to visit the three properties. And we'll be reporting back to the full ECA on September 14th, when we'll go into the verdict session.
Town clerk's memo?
There's no report at this meeting.
Okay. Town treasurer's memo?
So this, Jill can read it. For the Treasurer's Office for August 24th, 2021, there are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period was $9,051.63. Accounts payable was $37,068.05. General fund monies $14,112.91. Highway $9,681.48. Wastewater $22,945.29. $5,435.29 bills and $17,510 of the USDA payment. The USDA wastewater fall payment is included in the warrant. The fall payment comes from wastewater, not general fund. I will need to transfer money from savings to cover this. Taxes are coming in and are keeping things busy in my office. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack.
Everyone look over the warrants?
Yep.
Not yet. Right there in the folder, it's right here.
View.
I looked them over on the email.
Yeah, I did, too.
We got to start signing.
I'll move that we accept the warrants.
Another second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, accepting the warrants?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. So you guys can sign them and send them down. So that's it for town treasurer's report. Emergency Management Director?
Nothing at this meeting for either of those parties.
Or the health officer. Okay.
There was an email that Jennifer had passed along from the health officer. It was about, it was that poster for about COVID-19 procedures that she had got sent her way. I had forwarded it along to the board members as well as the town clerk, because it seemed like something that might be applicable to post somewhere public. But it was just about self-quarantining for people that are direct, have been directly exposed or have history of travel. So if anybody has any questions about that or would like a copy, here's for you to let me know.
These get signed when we voted on the tax rate. So we all have to sign this again, too.
So as far as this purchase order goes for Capital Tractor, do we all have to sign this?
Not generally.
We voted on it, so you can act as our agent.
Yeah. If it calls for multiple signatures, it can't hurt since you're all here, but.
Might as well sign it.
Do you ever plant a tractor?
These are.
No. Bought by Van every several years. Will you, do you need me to do anything for that, or?
Just to check when the time comes.
Well, that'll be Julie's. I'll have her put you in touch with my.
You got to sign that one. And the next one. And Jessica still has to sign that one. Wastewater Treatment Facility.
So there was, between the last meeting and this meeting, Jill had contacted the board about the lawnmower.
Yeah.
That was down there. So that was the one thing. And then she said that she was going to check in on the permit for the wastewater facility, but she was pretty certain that daily visits are required due to the nature of the wastewater facilities. So that was just, I know that was something that had come up in conversation. But that was the update from her. I've not heard anything since then. That was on, that was 12 days ago. So that was the last communication that I personally received from Jill, or that I was included in.
So I picked up the lawnmower, sharpened the blade. I'm going to drop it off tomorrow.
Nice.
And Richie and I are going to meet with her at noon and go over a few things that she has, some ideas that she's going to share with us about ways that we may be able to make changes, make things better and affordable. She's very concerned with the affordability factor. You know, she works in several, she has several plants that she runs. So she, she's aware of, you know, like up at Bolton, she says Bolton's going through a major, a major renovation, but they're also in a place where the town is building up. So, so that's, it'll, it'll be able to be shared a little bit more. But because of the status of our town, she's very concerned in trying to come up with ways that we can make this more affordable and stuff. So we'll find out more tomorrow and, and I'll come back to you at the meeting. Anything else? Town-owned property. Rich and I are going to meet with Josh Carvahal on Friday at noon and talk to him about that stream that comes down through the, it's a, it's kind of seasonal, doesn't it? All the time. It's seasonal that comes down through there. But when it does, when it comes down in the spring with a vengeance, it, it jumps the bank with, to the property that is now ours. So if there's a possibility that he will approve some type of remediation that we can do to that stream bank to keep it in the stream channel, while we own the property, we can do that and then keep a, retain a right to, to maintain it. So we'll see what he says and, and I'll come back, back to the board.
Does that, does that impact the town-owned property as well?
Well, the town owned, it really doesn't. Because the house that was on the town-owned property was closer to the front of the road. And it breaches way in the back portion of that property, which is kind of like right in the direct line of, oh, Lance Branton's garage. And then it floods all the back areas of the other two houses there and goes in, fills your cell and fills Maureen's back to wait. Those old houses were made, they had like a little woodshed in the back. And it just fills that right for about three feet of water generally when it's, when it's aggressive. So.
And then the other item, too, is where, where the town stands with the town-owned property and what steps in terms of getting that. Is that, so is this meeting first?
This meeting needs to be first in case we have to do something before we sell it. Because once we sell it, if we don't, if we don't have a clear retention to maintain that stream.
Yep.
Well, then we may not be able to do anything about it. So.
So for people that are still contacting with interest of that town-owned property, just keep?
We have a few loose, we have a few loose ends to tighten up. And then, I mean, I think we have a pretty good number of what we're looking at for, for our investment.
Great.
That we have tied up in it. And then we'll just go from there. Any other questions on that? Okay. Vermont Outdoor Recreation Grant, do you want to brief us on that, please?
Yes. So the letter of interest for this grant is due this Friday. And I put together a letter of, of interest, which I turned out to everybody. That's about the length that they want the letter to be. And it'll also be submitted, it'll be submitted online. And a number of other things have to be filled out. We've gotten, we've gotten a few other organizations who want to be part of this. We have, the Pollitt Historical Society would like to sign off on it. Because if we make this, so this grant for everybody is a grant to, a grant to get, use that little building. It's 13 Egg Street in West Pollitt, belongs to Bruce Sir Jane right now, to get a grant to turn that into a little welcome center for the rail trail. And it would have like a bathroom and some vending machines and information about local businesses. And we were thinking that we might also have some historical information about West Pollitt and the rail trail. And so the Historical Society might want to be part of it. And in fact, they do want to sign off on it. And two outdoor recreation groups also want to sign off on it, which is good, because that will make the grant look really good. And Bruce, what were the two outdoor recreation groups?
Sleep trails, both in the Lake St. Catherine area, and then North Shatter Trail System, which is in Dorset. And both of the, both presidents, both were excited about the project and full support.
And I have to hear back yet, but someone from the Pollitt, I bet, not the, the Rupert, either Planning Commission or Select Board was interested in maybe having Rupert be involved as well, since they're the other end of the rail trail. So we're just going to pull that together. And if the board votes to do that, to submit this letter of interest, we'll, we'll put it in this week and see what happens. We'll hear back by late September if they want us to submit a full grant. We'll hear back, um, by late September if they want us to submit a full grant. I mean, obviously it would be really nice if we could give this. This would be a, a great thing to put there.
Absolutely. So how does the board feel about this letter? Yeah, I had a chance to look it over.
It's a beautifully written letter, in my opinion. It's very nice.
Now, who would run and maintain this? How would that take place?
Well, that would have to be determined, but the grant monies could be used for that. So I, Mr. Surjane might be willing to, it would either be a long-term lease of his property or that he would give a easement. And that hasn't been determined yet for certain. But yeah, it wouldn't require a lot of running and maintaining?
Yeah, ideally, I guess it would be more of like, uh, kinda like these, all these farm stores that are running, you know, with a kind of a kiosk computer. And you would have, you know, vending machines that are kinda self-serving. Um, so it'd be, you know, minimal attention. Ideally, I think the state should, should be something, the state, the state takes care of the rail trail or they should have somebody come through at least monthly or something to check on the facility, but...
And the agency that, yeah, the agency that we're applying for the grant from is the one that runs the rail trail. So we could hash that out with them if they ask us to submit a full grant. But yeah, we would definitely want there to be provisions for it to be maintained.
But at this point right now, we're just, we're just asking if they'd even consider us to give the grant. We don't even have to accept it at this point.
Right, this is just a letter of interest. And if they ask us to submit a full grant, then we'll need to do that, um, in October, November.
Okay. But how does the board feel?
I think it's a great letter.
Okay. So that's a motion from John to apply for this grant.
I'll second that.
And Rich seconded it. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Great, that's super.
We'll take care of that.
Very nice letter, thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Okay, Act 250 follow-up. Jessica and Rich, you have done some research and... Jessica, you had a little report that you prepared.
Yep. And so Rich and I spoke with all the interested parties that we were able to. Um, I spoke to Matt and Emily and also to Mike Wesco. And Rich, you went and...
I met with them as well. I didn't meet with Charlie and Mark.
But I did meet with Charlie and Mark. Yep. And also, uh, Rich contacted Vermont League of Cities and Towns to get their input on what the proper process for zoning issues like this are. So I've written up a little four facts. These, we've done fact-finding and this is what we have found as far as facts. I'll follow that up after that, maybe with a little opinions, but facts first. So number one, the Act 250 and other state permit violations are not within the scope of town government to investigate or enforce. Number two, the Town of Pollet zoning permit violations are within the scope of town government to investigate and enforce. Three, Roble Farm has two permits from the Town of Pollet. One conditional use permit, which was approved by the ZBA and the Select Board in December 2005 and under the 2001 zoning regulations. So those were the ones in effect at the time. And another permit for expansion of the gravel pit and addition of a crusher, which was approved by the zoning administrator in January 2008. And I have the relevant documents here that, that Jonas put together for us. Um, this is the actual 2008 permit here. And he didn't get the actual 2006 permit, but we have the minutes of the, um, zoning board of adjustment when they met to look at it. And we have the Select Board minutes when they voted on it. So we know it exists even though we don't actually have the zoning permit. So those are the two permits from the town that would, would be relevant here. The fourth point is, the town official who is tasked with investigating zoning violations is the zoning administrator, Jonas Rosenthal. So the proper thing to do here is for those with concerns about zoning violations to issue a written complaint to, um, Jonas. And his day in the office is tomorrow, so he will be in tomorrow. He then needs to investigate it and determine if there has been a violation of either of these two town zoning permits. Once he makes a decision, this either way, this can be appealed to the Development Review Board, which would be the appropriate body to take the appeal. If that then gets appealed, it would go to the State Environmental Court and at that point, the Select Board and our town attorney would get involved. So that's the, that's the sort of order that towns in Vermont are supposed to follow regarding these kinds of zoning concerns. So, um, to just put my own little opinion in here, I think it's very important that everybody in our town follows the same set of rules and that the town enforces the rules that exist. That's, that's my own thought. That's not necessarily everyone else's words, but those are mine.
Okay, so... Questions from the audience and concerned citizens?
Comments and paperwork? Follow-up with what you just said? Jessica, you said that I can drop off the copy for Jonas?
Yeah, Jonas's office is right over there and I think that, I think that Kristen could give him something.
We can, we can put that in his office at the end of the meeting.
Curtesy to the Select Board of what Jonas is gonna receive. And these are copies of the violations issued by the state in 2016, which pertain to the violation of that zoning conditional use permit. There's a copy for everyone, I think Rich, you already have that copy?
I, I already have one also. Yep, Jonas got those together for Rich and I.
I gave one to Jonas earlier. There might be an extra one in there.
This is July 6th, letter from...
No, he said his is from 2016, that he's passing out.
So that's the first part of it.
All right.
I don't know if you wanna look at that? Now, do you have copies of the violations? If anybody in the audience wishes to have a copy?
Happy for you to have. And if it would be helpful here, I do have the, I have this section on sand and gravel pits, which is in the Town of Pollet's zoning regulations from 2001. So those are the, and if anyone wants a copy of that, I have, I have it here. We can make copies, but those would be the things that were in our town permit. So the, any lists of violations here, some of them will be of state stuff that doesn't necessarily pertain to this permit. But the, um, the section of our zoning regulations from 2001, and this would pertain to the sand and gravel pits unless in the conditional permit there were different conditions put on. But these are the general conditions. Um, they are, um, one, before approval of any new sand or gravel operation, the applicant shall agree that upon completion of extraction, the site shall be left in a safe and useful condition. The owner shall submit a plan of proposed improvements to accomplish this end to the Planning Commission for approval. Two, all surface drainage affected by excavation operations shall be controlled by the owner to prevent erosion, debris and other loose materials from filling any drainage course, street or private property. All provisions to control natural drainage shall meet with the approval of the Planning Commission. Three, excavation, blasting, stop piling of material, power-activated sorting machinery or equipment shall not be permitted within 200 feet of any street or property line unless agreed to by the owners of such properties. Rot-crushing machinery shall be permitted. And there was in the 2005 or early 2006 permit, um, an exception made for the 200 quid set back from the town road. Four, stripping of topsoil for sale or for use on other premises except as may be incidental to a construction project or sand or gravel operation on the same premises shall be prohibited. And then there's a part about sand or gravel pits on farms that are for agricultural use, which wouldn't be relevant. So that's what is in the town zoning documents that would have been applicable at the time. So those are the sorts of things that Jonas can look into.
I just have a question. Mike?
Yes.
What, did you all get a copy of these violations? Does the Town of Pollet get a copy of violations?
No.
No.
Is it something you need to maybe ask for? I mean, it would seem to me that there would be an interest in the township and the people in the town, if someone's running an operation and they had pages and pages of violations. And then I guess you're just saying, you just don't know about it, you shouldn't know about it or don't have to know about? I think the township should know about it.
That's all the state. The state rules all that and they don't share that with us.
They don't share it with you?
They do not share that with us.
Maybe you could ask them to get a copy of violations? Would that be, is there some reason this should be a private matter?
No, because it's all state. The state runs. The state runs all that permitting process. But they don't...
I get that, but is it, I know the gravel pit is in the state of Vermont. I thought it was also in the Town of Pollet.
But we have no control over any of these things in that permit.
You just, I understand real clear, you have no control.
That's correct.
Wouldn't you wanna know if someone's splatting in your backyard? You don't wanna know? Is that what you're saying? You don't wanna know?
I'm not saying we don't wanna know. I'm saying that that's the state system that they have in place.
But could you ask them for a copy of violations to be sent to the, at least to the, to, to you all? If not posted for every resident to see? I don't, I, I find that very flawed. And, uh, well, maybe you need some time to think about it.
Go ahead.
Hi, John DeCaro. While I was listening to your meeting, I just happened to see a copy of the Town of Pollet's Unified Bylaws right here on the table. In Article 1, Enactment Objectives Establishment of Zoning District and Map. Now, you say, Mike, you, your hands are tied. Here in Section 2, the objectives of the Town of Pollet's Unified Bylaws are the standards and policies established by these zoning regulations are intended to accomplish the following objectives. One, promote the health, safety and general welfare of all inhabitants of the town. Two, protect and conserve the value of property. And three, conserve and encourage the value of community as reflected in examples of volunteerism, yada, et cetera. Now, it seems to me if that's the unified bylaws of this town, you sit there and say, "We have no real reason or we have no capability to read violations in our town." When here, in the Town of Pollet Unified Bylaws, it states right there at the beginning of sixty-some odd pages. How do you answer that?
How do I answer that? That all of those permits are controlled by the state. They trump anything that we have to do.
Oh, wait a minute, you're interrupting. These are the Town of Pollet's Unified Bylaws. Go ahead, Jessica.
So that's the beginning of our unified bylaws, yes. And there are two zoning permits that exist that are based on our unified bylaws. And we should enforce our bylaws that do all those things that you said. And the way to enforce them is for this written letter to go to Jonas and for him to investigate it and for him to issue something and then for the, it could go to the DRB if necessary. Those are the governing bodies in our town that need to investigate it and take care of it. And, I mean, if they don't and they aren't able to take care of it, we have, then it goes to the next level. But for, I, I agree that we want, that these bylaws need to be followed. And if there are violations, they need to be taken care of and it needs to go through the right, to the right person who can look into it, who has that expertise and knows how to make a determination.
Okay, so say that determination is made, does that get back to our chairman now, Mr. Beecher, where he then can look at these violations? They must go through the process you just...
Nope, I have, um, let me find this. We contacted the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, who has attorneys who know about the exact process that needs to be gone through for various things. And, I mean, I'm new on the Select Board, so I don't always know the process we need to do and, um, Rich is also new here. This is what they wrote to us. I'll just read this to you verbatim. If a written complaint is received by the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator would investigate and determine if a violation exists. And this is about the Town of Pollet bylaws. If the ZA decides there is no violation, the owner can appeal this determination to the DRB ZBA. That's the Development Review Board. Um, that's the people who look at conditional uses and would have issued the conditional use permits. Obviously, a slightly different composition of the board, but back in the day. If the ZA decides there is a zoning violation, which is very fact-specific and should be informed by a consultation with the town attorney, so Jonas might speak to the town attorney while looking into this, the ZA can issue a formal notice of violation. The Select Board would not have a role unless and until the zoning appeals get to the Environmental Division of Superior Court, at which time the town attorney should advise the board on next steps. So that's, that's what BLCT has to do.
That's the process and therefore...
That's the process.
Now, this, these complaints, as enumerated here, we'll finally get them, Mr. Beecher and the board? Maybe?
Maybe. I mean, if, if the zoning administrator is able to make a determination and issue, say there is a violation, and issue a notice of violation and then the violation gets taken care of, then it doesn't have to go any further, right?
Well, that's correct.
Yeah, or if the zoning administrator decides there is no violation and someone wants to appeal that, then that does go further. So that's the process. I wanna emphasize that as a member of the Select Board, it's not that I don't care about this situation and I do think that people need to be able to live in safety and comfort on their own land. But that I'm not the person in the town who is qualified to make this determination and that is the zoning administrator. And since these are the rules that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, who know about their stuff, have made us aware of, I wanna follow these rules and I hope that you all will be fine with following these rules to get the violation taken care of as much as possible.
Thank you. And who is the administrator we asked this?
Um, Jonas Rosenthal. He's our interim zoning administrator because we have been unable to hire a full-time zoning administrator. So he also does...
He's part of our town, but, uh, he's an administrator?
He's part of our town government.
He's hired by our town.
Yeah, he's a town employee. He also does zoning for Castleton. So he's got quite a lot of experience. He's here on Monday mornings, I think from nine till one. His office is right over there.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry, yeah, Wednesday mornings.
But if, if I may, Mike seemed to suggest that with all that you just said, the town's hands are tied because of state regulations. And I, I, I don't quite follow that, Mike. I mean, from what you just said, no, you have...
I don't think that's what they're, they're suggesting, if I may. The state has a process and Pollet has a process.
And the rules that we are operating by are different. Um, the town, our part... The town, our particular rules are the ones that are in the zoning bylaws. So the ones that I just read. So for example, the town didn't have a rule that said you need to notify before blasting, right? But the state has that rule. So that particular one is something the state is going to have to look into, because it's not written in our bylaws.
How can we amend the town rule for that?
Well?
Because we'd sure like to know.
I'm on the Planning Commission. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission. We are working all the time to fix up our bylaws, because a lot of things in there are older and were put in for some particular problem that someone had, and some of them aren't as relevant now as they were in the seventies. So we are always looking for new things to, and Frank right here is also on the Planning Commission. And we always welcome people to come to our meetings, which are the fourth Monday of the month at 7:30. They're here or also on Zoom. Yeah.
Frank?
Can the City of Vermont in general agree with this? Act 250 has been kind of a craw on various peoples, you know, hard to chew on, depending on who you are. And it was built for the whole state, and you got Chittenden County with all this development, and you got some rural areas and all this other stuff. But what they did is they took some of these commercial properties and took it out of the control of all the criteria of the local people, the local towns.
The 250?
Act 250, correct. And that usurps everything. And so we're working through that now in the, when we changed from one to ten acre, and some of the power was given back. But this is a new round of our changes that we're working through at the Planning Commission level as to how we're going to move forward with that concept. So, but right now, the state has control in a lot of projects, commercial projects, that the town just simply isn't able to control.
So to sort of clarify how the, the work is divvied up, right? The Select Board, as far as I understand, determines about money and how the town's going to spend money and a lot of other things, like it can determine town ordinances. The Planning Commission works on the bylaws and the town plan, so that the regulations for zoning, and the Select Board has to sign off on that. And the zoning administrator is the one who like enforces the town bylaws.
May I ask another, a minute of comment? I, I respect all that, and Mike, I understand more of what you said. You have to wait for the processes to take place. However, last meeting, why did someone not ask Mr. McClellan the question as to why he did not inform the surrounding properties that he was blasted? I mean, I think this thing is getting carried away to the point where it's, we're trying to be neighbors. As one of the new neighbors that lives across from the quarry, quarry, I call it, gravel pit, said, "We're not here to put Mr. McClellan out of business. We would just like some compliance." And I understand Mike's comments and your comments that we have to wait for the Jonas and what have you, but, I mean, is, this is common sense and decency. Would somebody ask Mr. McClellan why he did not, can I ask that question? Inform surrounding neighbors that he was going to blast? It's a regulation, I believe, that he must hear in letter form or at least call. Why did he not do that, Mr. McClellan?
Chat, would you like to answer that question?
I did not know, and if the quarries don't have to, they can blow a whistle and let it go.
I'm sorry? You just have to blow a whistle, what, five, 10 minutes before, and you can let it go?
Yeah.
That's your understanding? Okay, I think that has to be addressed. I would suggest to you that there must be a bit more time involved than just blow a whistle and a bit more process to go through to alert neighbors, people, fellow citizens here, we are of Pollet. Let's not get caught up in the state, and he can't do anything. Let's, if we can, bring some common sense and decency to the process. Mr. McClellan, I'm sorry, I think you've been in the business long enough, and you mean to say you're going to sit there and say, "All you have to do is blow a whistle and let it go." That's your understanding?
That's just what Gibby did.
I'm sorry?
That's what Gibby did when he bought it four years ago.
That's what Gibby did. Gibby?
But we, we have to, everything has to be addressed today.
I'm sorry, Gibby being who?
Give Matt is a blaster. And honestly, that has been the approved method to alert people. I grew up across the number four quarry in West Pollet, and whenever we heard a horn blowing, we knew that they were going to blast. Is it the best way to do it in today's state? Probably not.
Probably farmers required by their permit and those by everybody, and it's listed one week ahead of time.
Okay, so, so what you changed-
That's not responsible, but probably certainly is.
Well, is that in the town court, or is that in the 250?
That's in the 250.
Okay, well, we, we only have jurisdiction with the town thing to do and say here, so...
But they're sitting right here, and they know they have the permit.
I get it. I get the frustration. But, you know, it's kind of goes back to what's the goal here?
I still want the name and license number of the person who shot the blast. I think I have the right to know that as an enjoying landowner, as the other people here.
I, I agree. And Chat and I had a conversation out in the street after the last meeting, and we kind of agreed that he could go and drop a note to everybody before they lit something off.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the last sentence.
Sorry, no, no.
All right, so, please talk to me. So you, you and Chat talked, and you're-
Yeah, after the last meeting, Chat and I were outside visiting. I just told him, you know? You know, drop us a note, come by, knock on the door, whatever, before you're going to light something off, so we've got a day or two.
God bless you. I mean, is that hard?
Happy wife, happy life, so, you know?
Mike, I have a question. Is that hard for Mr. McClellan to comply with?
Is that suitable to you?
I, I would think so. Any time element rather than blow a whistle and let it rip would be cracking.
Okay, so we've made improvements now, because Chat's willing to deal, to talk with, over with the neighbors, so then this will be avoided the next time.
Okay. Is that, right, Chat?
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
So we've, thank you, sir, for making, going that extra and making that happen.
The new guy in town. Along with everybody.
Thank you, neighbor.
Is there any other questions? Mike?
I still have a follow-up to what I turned in. I don't know if you want that now, but I'm still looking for the name and the license number of the blaster.
We have the name and phone number.
So I, if I may, I had forwarded you the name and the phone number in, via email yesterday or today. It's Woody's Drilling and Blasting. I sent you an email, and I said that Rich and Jessica had attempted to contact him and had only gone to voicemail. So con, attempts have been made. You're, you have his-
I did not see that email.
Okay, it's in my sent. I'll send it to you again.
I saw it. You sent it with, with you copied on it.
There have been a slew of messages, so that did go to you. So the attempts have been made, so if we get the information-
Is the license number included?
No, no, I'm saying we have the name and phone number. No, I, I understand what your request was. I'll finish, but, so their attempt has been made to get that license number.
Okay.
There's been no success with that yet. So you're also, I included the phone number so that you're welcome to also follow up. If we get the information before you do, it'll be, you'll be the first one to get it.
According to the State Public Safety Board, there is no Woods or Woody's Drilling and Blasting listed on there, so that's why I'm asking.
Did, last, last time, didn't Mr. McClellan give us a little packet of documents that included the, um-
Certificate of Insurance.
Certificate of Insurance. Is that what you were looking for?
I'm looking for the, the blaster who sets the charge has a name and a license number. Looking for that so I can get information from him about what was done at the site.
I would have thought that would be on the insurance certificate, but maybe not.
Is there any more questions regarding this subject? Mike?
Part two. Jessica alluded to the 2008 permit. I've been, I had talked to Jonas about this several times in the past, as well as you two have been. So at this meeting, I'm making a formal request to inquire into the validity, there's a copy here for everybody, of that permit, because it follows none of the town's rules, regulations, how it was presented, how it was obtained, the fact that there's no record of it in the town, that Mr. Rosenthal can't find it, that even Mr. Matt can't find it when he was still zoning administrator.
Are those the permits that you, one of them you found, right?
This is the one that he's talking about.
If you're getting it from Rosenthal, I gave it to him. Mr. Rosenthal's last comment to me is, "I don't know what you want me to do."
This is a continual application for zoning permit right here.
Yes. Yeah, that's the application, and it's signed there by Eric Matt, who was the zoning administrator at the time. I think what Mr. Wesco is getting at is that as a conditional use permit, it should have gone before the, the ZBA?
It has to, and it did not.
So these also were things that Jonas needs to address, right?
I've already asked Jonas to address it. He said he spoke to you, Mr. Beecher. And your response is that if the permit is in a letter, then it exists. I asked for the town, through Mr. Rosenthal, to put it in writing that it exists. He wouldn't do it.
So I guess the question here is whether this was a valid permit or not. I'm not sure how we would determine that. It might be a matter for our county attorney to look at.
Yeah, I would, you know, you get to the board.
Is this a copy that I can use to?
Yeah, look, can we make a copy of that?
We can make a copy. We have to see if, if the notification-
And this was he, this was he.
Was on the ZBA at the time.
There's much more information on that, everyone on the board. It's just I condensed it to one sheet so you can just look at it and find, follow the chronological order, how the permit was produced and somewhat negated, that there was not to be a hearing on it. That's where the end of my paper trail goes to.
I'll pass this on to the, to our legal counsel and have her review it and have a decision. Not a decision, but input from her for the next meeting. Frank?
If it, if it's a process thing, might be able to do BLCT as a mirror, pretty much close to what you were discussing with them before, and then bring them in, and you might not have to spend money on an attorney if you, if BLTC gives you the advice you need.
Do you want to go down that route first and see if they want to make a decision on it, and then if?
I can, I can, I can contact them, yes.
So you can send them-
And then let you know what I find, and then we can-
Then we can decide if we need to go to the next step.
Yeah.
Mr. Beecher?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know, I only know from the back. Frank?
Yes.
Last name?
Frank Nelson.
Hi. What's your name?
Frank Nelson.
Nelson, oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. They have, BLTC gives advice, they have a brain trust to help out.
You have a good idea.
Okay, so we'll, we'll research that farther and have more information on that subject for the next meeting.
I want them to feel free to contact me.
Okay, we have your, your email. Is there any more discussion on this?
It's final note. It was really great, great to see you guys out there and hand around, you know, meeting folks, so really appreciate your due diligence.
Is there any new business tonight? No. Is there any public comment regarding anything? Frank?
The Planning Commission met, and we tried out the Owl, and it worked great, and Jessica set that up, and Kristen, thank you very much. And probably what's going to happen, I anticipate, if you want to comment on this, Kristen, is you're going to go to a hybrid force once you get it ironed out.
Hopefully for the next meeting. Yeah. I can piggyback on that.
You do.
So I've reached out to our I, our IT guy, Vinnie, with no, with no word back. So what I've done is I've reached out to Julie to see what our budget is for, you know, additional for purchasing more equipment, and I was just going to price out, I'm savvy enough, I was just going to price out a computer and a screen, just to see what that could be. And then at the very least, I think, even if for next meeting, if we don't have it, I can volunteer just to bring a computer that we can set up so that we can have folks call in remotely. That way, it's great to have a full room, but if anybody can't make it but still wants to tune in, you can follow the Zoom link, just the way that we did it when we were fully remote. And this new piece of equipment is really cool, and it's a great way for everybody to be able to be involved without necessarily being physically present. So at the next meeting, my plan is to have a Zoom link, so.
Can we work together on that? I can use the resources at work.
Okay.
Our IT guy is excellent and set up a lot of these at work, so.
Cool, yeah.
He told me he'd be more than happy to help me choose what we needed to-
Yeah, I think at this point, we just need somebody to say, "This is what I would recommend," just because I, I'm, you know, I can do the search and whatnot, but, and we just need to figure out, you know, do we want a computer, or is there a tablet maybe that we can get that might be, because we don't really need a whole computer just to be, you know, functioning as the Owls.
I will talk with him tomorrow and get, and see what he can compile for us.
So, yeah, so it might, and the library has also shared, they have a projector and a screen that we're most welcome to borrow. But I think that, you know, we can, we can totally get through it on our own, it just might not be totally streamlined and beautiful, but we're there, we're well on our way, which is great, so.
Frank?
Let's see, trial and error is all figured out, which we figured it worked great last night. Okay, I think that you might, and I talked to Julie about this, and she thought maybe it might be a good idea, is that if we're dependent upon that single device, and it goes down in the middle of the meeting, it might be, or town meeting, if we're using it there, then you might just pick up another one just to, just to have a case, one breaks down, you don't have to wait for it to come in, you can just plonk, plop it into place, even, you know, it's redundancy. So you might want to consider that, and it could be paid for, for free again, out of the grant, out of the money that's coming.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Anything else?
Did we have to talk about art, art buffoons?
We weren't, we, we took that off because-
Oh, you did.
I was putting together that little one-page thing, and I didn't get any further on it, because I was working on this other stuff. We'll do that next time. Yeah, so if you have any suggestions, send them- Yeah, for that document, the little like survey?
Yes.
Yeah, please send me any suggestions people have about that little survey, so I can put together a better copy for next time. And while, if I may, while we have a full room, so the town has been awarded grant funding, federal grant funding for COVID relief monies, and there's very specific rules and regulations on how we can use it, but the board really wants to get input from the community to see what you think might be a good way to, to use it for our town. So we've already had to, you know, let some people down generally that we can't use it to lower tax bills and things like that, but there- Everybody would like that. Everybody would love that. So there, there are unfortunately, all, the theme here is that there are unfortunately a lot of rules and processes, but this is a really great thing, so we'll be working on that to get input and feedback, so definitely stay, stay tuned. Our goal is to send out a survey to everybody in the town, just a little like written survey that people can fill out with like the top, you know, mark your top choices of things we can do with this, basically. And then also, we would love as we go forward, especially-
And then also, we would love as we go forward, especially now that it'll be easy for folks since you can Zoom in, we would love for people to show up to the meetings when we're discussing the use of these funds and just give further, like more in-depth feedback for anyone who wants to, so, yeah. It's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime... Wait, I mean, the town is getting at least... At least $140,000. So this is more money than we generally get from the federal government, which is zero.
Can we buy a tractor with it?
We can't buy a tractor with it.
In general, we can just do a little teeny... Let me do a teeny brief rundown on it. In general, we can use the money for things that are related to the COVID health emergency or to the COVID economic emergency, right? And we can also use it to pay town workers, like hazard pay. And we can also use it to address wastewater... I almost have this memorized, but thank you for bringing it up. To address wastewater, water, or broadband infrastructure. We can't use it for roads, unfortunately. But, yeah, so all those are things we can use it on. So start, you know, rolling this around in your head.
Anything else?
Are we done?
You do it.
Yeah, I even did it before meeting tonight. Ready for a whole evening. I'm hopefully adjourned.
Every second on that? John seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrie, thank you all for coming.